Welcome to Lamoore City Council. It is now seven thirty, regular meeting, called to order. Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And as you stand, remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Kimberly Nelson. Ready? Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we approach your throne boldly, Lord God, and we humble ourselves before you. Father God, we just release all of this into your hands from the beginning to the end, Father God. And I pray peace, in the name of Jesus, into this place. We welcome you in here, and we ask for your guidance. We ask, Father God, that you would be with our leaders, Lord God, as they are guiding and leading our community, Father God, and they are our voice. But, Father God, I also pray for the people that are on this side of the podium. Lord God, that you would be with their hearts and you would be with their mouths as well, that you would enable them to articulate their hearts, Lord God. I pray, Father God, for our community. There's things that go on in our community that never cross our ears and never cross our eyes because of your protection. Father God, I pray for every single soul in Lamoore, and I ask, Father God, that your hand rests upon them. I pray for our leaders here, Lord God, and their families. Lord God, they are sacrificing their time right now for you, Lord. And I ask for your blessing to be upon them, Lord Jesus, and I ask that you take care of their family. I pray, Father God, for our police department. I ask you, Father God, for your guidance and your protection as they protect and serve us, Lord God. I ask that you be with their families, Lord. I pray for the firemen, Lord, as they go out, Lord Jesus, and they rescue and they help in every capacity that they are called to. And I ask, Father God, that you would just bring community, bring love, bring peace to this place. I thank you, Lord, for all that you're doing, in Jesus' name.
Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you for your prayer. At this time, is there any public comment? I see Amy Ward. Excuse me, I'm sorry, let's go back. I want to go to roll call. Mr. Vanegas.
Councilmember Blair.
President.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Lyons.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Billingsley.
Here.
Mayor Neal.
Here. And there's nothing to report out of closed session. Amy Ward, please. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Amy Ward, CEO, Lamoore Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today to invite you all out to our nineteenth Annual Pizza Festival, Central Valley Pizza Festival, and Lamoore Days. So, one of the questions that's been asked is why the addition of Lamoore Days? Well, the Central Valley Pizza Festival was originally designated to celebrate that Lamoore has everything that goes into a pizza. We've got La Prinos, and we've got some cheese, we've got olives, we've got tomatoes. We've got our farmers, they provide the stuff for the dough and the toppings and all the fun stuff. But at the end of the day, I really love Lamoore, so I think it's our opportunity to celebrate what Lamoore is. Back when the Chamber first started, we had Lamoore Days. So, it's a great way to kind of bring that back and celebrate that. In addition to that, we're growing it this year because it is Lamoore Days. We can't celebrate Lamoore Days without having a big old party with everybody. So, we've got the city helping us, Jason Glick and Parks and Rec helping us. We have the police department setting up booths out there, the fire department will be out there. Santa Rosa Rancheria will be out there with booths to teach culture and crafts with the kids. We've got performers from all over the city coming out here. The Lamoore Middle College High School Panther Band is going to come out and rock with us for one of the nights. So, the twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, out at City Park, the Central Valley Pizza Festival, and Lamoore Days, it's going to be bigger than ever. We're going to have carnival rides, games, all kinds of fun stuff. So, I do hope that we see you guys there.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Amy, you said the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth?
I did, yes. Yeah, so the twelfth will kick off at five PM. This is where we'll have the NJROTC students from Lamoore High School come out and do colors because we want to start this off right, obviously. We're going to have the Lamoore Middle College High School Band out there, and then Kalifis. And so, there's beer and wine garden, and we do all of that kind of fun stuff, food to eat. And then, all day on Saturday from ten to ten, so we're going to be a little tired, but totally worth it. And then, on Sunday, will just be the vendors, the food vendors and the carnival. There won't be any bands or anything like that, but that will be from twelve to five. So, it's just an extra day for the families to come out and have a good time.
Awesome.
Hope to see you guys there.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? See, there's none. Ceremony and presentations, there are no ceremony and presentations. Department and City Manager Report, Section Two.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. First up tonight is Fire Chief Bruce German.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers. Want to give my report for what we had going on for the month of March. We had four meetings and drills, we had thirty-eight fire calls, hundred-and-eight EMT calls, and four miscellaneous for a monthly total of a hundred-and-fifty-four calls. Year-to-date meetings and drills are thirteen, year-to-date fire calls a hundred-and-twenty, year-to-date EMT calls three-hundred-and-fifty-nine, year-to-date training miscellaneous is six, for a year-to-date total of four-hundred-and-ninety-eight calls for the first three months of the year.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Just a few events to talk about. On Saturday, April twentieth, we have the annual egg hunt. That's at Lyons Park, starts at nine-thirty AM. On Saturday, April twenty-seventh, is the Mother and Son Campout at Circle T Ranch. That starts at six PM. From six to seven, you set up your tent. The actual event starts at seven PM. And this is a big one, where we're actually meeting on and working on right now. On Friday, June fourteenth, put this on your calendar, at Heritage Park, we're going to dig up the Heritage Park time capsule that was buried twenty-five years ago. Mr. Neal, your brother has a football card buried in that time capsule.
Does he? I remember he did for you.
Also, it's a really busy time in Parks and Rec. I'm also working with retired Parks and Recreation Director, Tom Hernandez, bringing an RV sale to the youth sports complex sometime in the fall. We're excited about that. And myself and another staff member have been busy going to Prop sixty-eight workshops. It's grant funding for parks, there's a lot of opportunities. We're just trying to figure out ways to get our parks funded. Once we figure out ways to get them funded, we'll start applying for those grants. That's it, thank you.
Excuse me, I asked you a question. The Prop sixty-eight, when is it open? When does it start? When do you get there?
Prop sixty-eight, they had a launch about a month ago, and we attended a workshop in Sacramento, I'm sorry, in Fresno, and then I attended a workshop in Sacramento. But there's two main criterias to actually apply for the grant. One is the median household income at the grant site needs to be under fifty-one thousand, and the parks per capita has to be, the radius has to be within three miles of park space. So, we're trying to, there's two main criterias. You can match either one or the other.
What time does that open? I mean, when would you guys start? When would that start?
Well, what we do is, we're working on that schedule right now.
That's what I'm saying.
So, once we have a schedule, we have to have five public meetings at those park sites, and the public will determine what they want at those park sites. But we have to get those park sites eligible to apply first, and we're working closely with the representatives, the reps of the state of California.
Okay. Thank you.
How close are we right now to meeting the criteria that's necessary? There's a few parks already that meet the criteria. Heritage Park meets the criteria, City Park meets the criteria. There's a city property where the Little League folks play, that meets the criteria. The youth sports park right now does not meet the criteria. We're trying to figure out a way to make that happen.
Why not?
And the folks at the state, it doesn't meet the median household income. So, but we're thinking outside of the box and trying to figure out a way to make that happen. So. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, then, my update, just a couple of things that we're working on are coming down the pipe. We're currently working with legal and staff on a draft ordinance regarding cannabis that will be coming forth in a study session in the near future, as well as getting things ready to go to Planning Commission prior to coming to council. That's one thing staff's working on with legal. Working on budgets right now, and until we get an approved budget for next year and close out this year, we've implemented a hiring freeze on all full-time positions for now through the end of this fiscal year. One of the exceptions may be, we do have some public safety positions that are grant-funded, so if those become vacant, we would probably look to fill those being their grant-funded. But for the most part, we're going to hold pat on hiring anybody for the rest of this fiscal year. And then, we did complete a reorganization that affected the finance offices and the City Manager's Office, so basically, we used existing staff. We had six positions that we have now filled with five, so the savings to the general fund is roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year. And utilizing staff, we feel we've got the right people going forward to enhance what we have and be better off for it, so you will not see a sacrifice in service. That's it, thank you.
Okay, I just want to ask you, with the cannabis, I know you say you're working on it with staff. Is there a time limit on that, or?
Not necessarily. We're trying to get it to council as soon as we can, but we have to meet the requirements. First, we have to write it, we have to go do some public outreach. It has to go to Planning Commission first, then I believe there's a thirty-day period after Planning Commission gives a recommendation before it comes to council. So, I'm trying to get it to council as soon as we can, but we want to make sure we come with a quality product and make sure we do the education upfront.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Who would be writing the ordinance exactly?
So, staff is working in conjunction with our city attorneys.
Exactly, please.
I believe it's Ms. Lee Burdick and Janelle Van Binzbergen.
Thank you.
Okay. Going to consent calendar, Section Three. Three dash one, approval minutes, regular meeting, March nineteenth, twenty nineteen. Three dash two, approval objection letter regards to the tribal land. Question, application for APNs of zero-two-one slash three-eight-zero slash zero-one-six slash zero-zero-zero, zero-two-one, three-eight-zero slash zero-seventeen, zero-zero-zero, and zero-two-one slash three-zero-zero, zero-zero-seven, zero-zero. Three dash three, approval letter to support and compensation, safety, health, safety and health, Valley Fever, AB two-oh-three. Three dash four, approval letter to support roundabouts, AB six-thirty-four. Three dash five, approval resolution, twenty-nineteen slash thirteen, recognizing the importance of the twenty-twenty U.S. Census. Three dash six, approval bid award, CIP, fifty-seven-hundred, Finance Department, remodeling and additions. Any council want to pull any of these items?
I'd like to please pull items three dash one, three dash two, three dash three, three dash four, three dash five, and three dash six, please.
Say that again.
All of them.
All of them, okay.
We also have a correction on three dash one.
Okay. All right. Three dash one, approval minutes and regular meeting, March nineteenth, twenty nineteen. You want to pull that one, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Mrs. Blair? Staff going to present it.
So, we noticed on the minutes under Department and City Manager Reports, two dash one, it was typed out that the city has paid out nineteen hundred for the sidewalk program that should actually be nineteen thousand.
Quite a big difference.
Under two dash one, Public Works Director Frank Rivera stated nineteen thousand had been paid out, not nineteen hundred.
Okay, thank you.
That's the only correction on that one.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Any questions from the council? I see there's none. Okay. Is there a motion? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve three dash one with a correction.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Okay. Three dash two, approval objection letter of regards to the tribal land, accusations that, applications for APNs, zero-two-one, et cetera. Okay. Nathan?
So, I guess, this was a letter we received on March seventh, basically, from the United States Department of the Interior related to bringing these APNs under the jurisdiction of the tribe. This is not really adjacent to their existing properties. The properties we're talking about are where Kentucky Fried Chicken is located and the property next to it, and the immediate property north of Seven-Eleven. The reason staff is requesting that we send a letter of objection to the Department of the Interior is a couple of things. The land is located approximately six miles or more outside of the tribe's current land reservation and is located within the city limits of the city of Lamoore. If granted, the city would lose needed revenues to the community in the form of taxes and other fees. Property taxes alone for these parcels is over twelve thousand a year. Additionally, the city would be unable to enforce any local laws, regulations, or requirements on sections of that land. So, basically, none of our ordinances or zoning would matter. We would have zero control over what can be built on those lots, so to speak. And then, the two parcels are located in the main shopping centers of Lamoore, so it could be, future changes could be very inconsistent with the city's general plan and detrimental to the overall character.
Okay.
Well, I would like to pose a question, and anybody would like to answer. If you were to buy a property located in the city of Lamoore, so you buy a home, would you want the city after, before you even purchase the home, to say, before you purchase the home, before you come and move from other city you're at from and you come over in Lamoore, we want to make sure that you give us rights to whatever minerals you find underground, and we also, anything that you decide to build on there, we're going to tax. But we're going to make you sign that ahead of time before you even buy the property. You'd probably find it pretty insulting, you'd probably move along. Essentially, that's sort of what we're doing, but on an epic scale, because they're a sovereign nation, and we're not even treating them with the dignity of having a dignified discussion with adults before we're jumping right to, we need to make sure that we tax ahead of time, or we state that we want to tax it, because, Lord knows, if they come into the city of Lamoore and they don't give us tax money, it's not worth the time to have them here, right? It's a very badly written letter, in my opinion. Thank you.
Anybody else want to elaborate on this, on the council? Well, I'm going to elaborate a little bit on it. I wrote down some things with this letter. What says city staff is reviewing the potential impacts of the accusations will have on the city of Lamoore. Add Lamoore City Council, and I would like you to add, not just staff, I would like it to be where we have a choice, where we can speak on that as well. Staff with the city council. When you go down to paragraph three, it says here, "The city would be unable to enforce local laws and regulations and requirements on sections of land located within one of the cities and businesses areas." These segments, lands is potentially create unique safety issues in the city due to the fact that the objective of land could also be affected. Okay, I wish that could be revised, because it seems like it's us and them. I want it to be, we're one team, and I want to have that relationship with the American Indians, the Native Americans, letting them know that we're here to work with them. They've been working with us for a great time. When we went there, we went to their, they had a meeting with the cities and counties, and when they had the meeting with the cities and counties, that was the first time they ever had one, and it was at the Tatchee Palace. And food was great, they truly welcomed us in, and the good thing about it, they just let us know what they wanted to work with. They wanted to work with the county, they wanted to work with us. And if we could all work together instead of putting stipulations, because not only crime comes from certain individuals, it seems like we're bringing this, where it's going to be crime, where we don't want to say, well, this is the law, and if we do this, this is going to go against. It's like we're calling them out. And I'm trying to beat around the bush, that's why I don't want to just say it bluntly. But I think we need to just watch our choice of words, how we write these out, and I think if you just write it, I agree with the taxes, don't get me wrong, but I just don't agree with, okay, the crime, or if this, if they make this sovereign land. I don't think nothing in Lamoore should be sovereign land, just like we had this discussion a couple of years ago, and this was about selling the golf course at one time. And that's the only reason I didn't want to sell the golf course, because of sovereign land. And I don't want to make nothing sovereign land. I support the palace. You see all the jobs they bring in here? The jobs that they bring, people coming all the way out from Bakersfield to work here, to Larry, Fresno, not just Lamoore. So, I want it to be where you have, where it's, please, revise the language if can, because it seems offensive. It sounds like us against them. As a city, we want to include everyone. We want to be a team. As long as we can be a team, that's what it's all about. And I don't think this was intentional. I just think the way things are, if it can become sovereign land, this could happen. So, we want to put it where we don't want it to be where we saying, no, because we've got people coming down from Fresno, commit crimes down here. We've got people coming from, Bakersfield commit crimes down here because it's a small town. But I want to put it where we're all working as a team. We're not calling them convicts, we're not calling them this, we're working together as a team. That's the whole. Go ahead.
Okay, so, Mayor Neal, the intent of the letter is, we received notification from the United States Department of the Interior asking for letters of objections to this. So, this process was already started, and it's going through the government as we speak. So, letters went out to about twenty-something-plus entities, and we have thirty days to respond to the letter, which the deadline to respond is April seventh. So, if we don't respond or don't have this done by April seventh, we have no say. Somebody else is going to make the determination if they're going to allow these parcels to become sovereign land or not. So, if they do become sovereign land, then we have zero jurisdiction and have no say in anything that can be built there or not built there, or what goes on there. And a portion of this also states that they want easements granted on the roadways in front of these parcels, which means we would lose our ability to maintain Eighteenth Avenue in front of these parcels and the public utilities that are there.
So, does that mean to work on the public utilities of the road, you'd have to have their permission?
Yes. Yes, that's exactly what that means. And they can still work with the city, we would love to work with them. The only difference would be if they want to develop here, they just have to follow the same rules that everybody else that builds within our city limits has to follow. We're not saying you can't build anything. They would just have to follow the same zoning ordinances and building codes and pass the inspections like everybody else that does business.
Although, I do agree with Ms. Blair to a point, and Mr. Neal. It's not like saying you can't build a house, it's just saying like you can't put an oil dirt in a residential neighborhood, that's what we're trying to, I want to work with the palace, too.
Exactly. And all I'm saying is, if we could just word it a little differently.
So, would you feel better if we struck the second sentence in item three in the letter? That says these segmented lands could potentially create unique safety issues for the city? And that line isn't meant for like crime, that could be anything. If they decide to put a hotel up on one of those parcels and not add additional parking, and we had, it's stuff like that, but we can rephrase that, but I'd like to get language tonight if we could, so we can get this signed and if voted on, get it off.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that, sir.
So, you're right, that words matter, and I don't know that any of it is necessarily intentional, though when somebody continuously tells you to stop doing something, you probably should listen. I'm just interested in, when we change the language, has anybody, we keep talking about it like it's a zero-sum game, as though we know for sure that, speaking with a sovereign nation does not necessarily mean that they will want to turn that land into sovereign land. Has anybody bothered to ask them if that's even their total plan? Like, maybe they wouldn't mind, hey, we're going to be fine with, you know, doing everything that anybody else who develops in Lamoore does. We're just saying, you know, we're not just Joe Schmo developer that you normally meet, that every city can come across, we are a dignified sovereign nation, and, you know, in that situation, it's nice to approach the situation as such, in a respectful way. Because if we were asking a business owner, for example, a large business conglomerate to come fill, say, for example, the Kmart vacancy, we would probably invite them to a nice sit-down in a conference room and have a nice discussion, maybe some coffee, and try to kind of meet middle ground of what is their vision for coming into our city is and how we can best accommodate that. And I'm saying, if we can do that for just a developer, why can't we just treat a sovereign nation with that same respect? The fact that we're not approaching it in that way is the disrespectful part in the first place, because nobody's even asked them if for sure, they're dead-set on, if we get this land, we're going to make it a sovereign nation. Has anybody asked?
That's not disrespect.
Well, Councilmember Blair, the intent of their application is to make it a sovereign nation, period. They didn't come to the city and say, hey, we'd like to develop and work a deal with you, or, they didn't come to the table. We got a letter from the Department of the Interior stating you have thirty days to respond, because they have filed an application to make this sovereign territory. If that happens, you know, we can try to talk to them, and they might, I don't know, but that's not how it came off. It came off in a letter to us as, we want to make this sovereign property, and in the best interest of the city, I can't in good conscience recommend that we allow that to happen.
Didn't a year ago, a little over a year ago, I request personally that I would be allowed to go out there as a representative to the city with any other council member at that time, and I specifically suggested that we bring a gift of either rolled sage or loose-leaf tobacco, and try to sit down on common ground and hash out, hey, what can we do in the future to work together? Was that or was that not a conversation that we had almost, like almost a year and a half ago, actually?
I do remember that conversation, and at the time, I don't believe we had consensus from council.
Was it ever brought forward, though? I asked, correct?
That night here, my recollection was, we did not receive consensus from council to do that. So, we have been for many months, and I think it took me, took us, and with the help of Amy Ward, probably seven, eight months to actually get a meeting with the council, and I will say, it was very pleasant, very nice. We sat down for an hour and forty-five minutes, about a month or month and a half ago. And, you know, they're going through elections now, so the tribal council we met are all up for reelection. May or April fifteenth, they get, their vote happens, and then, May first, the new members of the tribal council get seated. But we do have the right contacts now and the people for integration and doing things together as a community, and we're starting to build those landscapes, and the consensus in our meeting was kind of the same thing. There hadn't been much communication between us and the tribe and the tribe versus us, and the most standing member, who has seventeen years now on the tribe, said that was the first time, she's been on council, that anybody's approached her from the city and actually came in and introduced themselves. So, you know, I can't speak for all the past, but we're working towards a good relationship with them, and we're going to continue to foster that relationship.
Think of all that time that was lost when we could have had that two years ago by simply having, we go and speak with them.
Okay, if I may interject, I understand what you're saying, and I understand. I think we are moving forward. I think I need to open this up to the public and see if they want to expound any of this.
Tom, me, ten sixty, Department of Lamoore. It's interesting that things that the city does or doesn't do, we get blamed for, but the things that the tribe does or doesn't do, they don't seem to get blamed for. Now, if it was on their do, they don't seem to get blamed for. Now, if it was on their application to the Department of Interior to make this tribal land, and I see some real problems with that. For instance, if you had a problem there, it doesn't have to be tribal problem. What if the KFC happens to be robbed? Who's going to respond to that? It's within the city limits of Lamar. But yet the tribal police are probably not going to be there. So it would fall on our responsibility. So there would have to be some recompense for us to cover that. Suppose there's a fire there. Our fire department's going to have to respond. And so there's, there's some real problems with that. It would appear to me that if the tribe was wanting to do this, they could have also come to us and say, look, this is what we're going to do. This is what we want to do. But another thing that they can do, if it's tribal land, they can set up their own store to sell marijuana for whatever use, recreational, medical, you name it. They can do anything they want. So it's incumbent upon not only us, but incumbent upon them. It's not one side's failure, it's both sides' failure. So if they were really wanting to do something, they should have contacted us also. I'm not laying the blame on them. It's everybody's fault. But there are some serious problems of that land becoming tribal land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public, if I may interject and say something about this? I see there's none. Going back to the council. Mr. Billings?
Yeah, Mr. Reed brought up a, a really good point about, about the tribe coming in here and, and asking the questions that they wanted to. I just want to verify that. Has that happened? Has that not happened? Was our conversation when we were out there a couple of weeks ago? I just want to kind of feel where their stance is.
No, all the, all the brief they gave us was what you saw at the city county coordinator meeting, that they want to pursue economic development. So they're looking for some land acquisitions to the, to the tribe.
And removing from the Williamson Act.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it not only affects some parcels in Lamar, but it also affects some parcels in Hanford. And my understanding is Hanford is objecting as well.
Okay. So with, with that being said, I, I know we're doing everything we can as a city to try to build a relationship with them and, and, and work a little better. And I know Ms. Ward, you've been out there talking with them a lot. And, and the meeting we had a couple of weeks ago was, was very positive. So I, I don't see any reason why the communication couldn't go both ways and, and them express the interest to make that sovereign land. So that's really all I wanted to comment on.
I have a question. How many of our council members are familiar with the, the way the other couns, the way the tribal council operates and how their meetings go and sort of their rules of the tribe? How many of you are familiar with that? I'm not. I'm, I'm not saying I am. I'm, I'm saying.
I wasn't on that board, no.
Imagine if you were another country. I'm going to give a country everybody can imagine. Let's say you're France, okay? And you are as a, the country, you want to put something in Lamar. And, oh, I just got my computer wet. Nice. Sorry. Turn this off. So my question though is that if you're told, okay, this is a little city entity, but you're a nation, you have to go through the federal process. And so you need to go through this form. And there's this bureaucracy, and then you need to go through this channel here. And if you're not familiar with how the council operates on, on a daily basis, because your country operates in this other way, you're just going to go by what the, the government says. This is the paperwork you need to do. They may not know that they haven't talked to us in a way that we expect them to, because they were just told to do this form and this form because they're a nation and they have to go this, this route. Have we even tried to hash that out first? We're just assuming this without actually talking with them. I don't understand why we're making these assumptions, that they would know this.
So my first knowledge of any of this was the letter the city received, that they were moving forward with this. So short of being able to read their minds, I have.
How long ago was that, if I may? How long ago was that?
We received the letter on March 7.
March 7, okay.
Counsel, the letter was received by the city on March 7. It require, it, the lands are identified as already being owned by the tribe. So they already own the tri, they own the lands. And they, that is required by the application process. They've applied it for it to be sovereign land. And the city has 30 days to choose whether or not to object to making the land sovereign.
If I may ask a question. Those lands were purchased, those lands were, that were not sovereign lands before, of course. They were purchased like any other person would buy in real estate in the city of Lamar.
Correct.
Like any other, any other.
How long have they owned that land?
Is the, is the application in here? It says.
I have it on my computer. It's going to take me a minute to find it. I'm looking for it.
It's on the title report. Since 2000, according to the title reports.
Both of them?
They had, they had the one by 7-Eleven, that property over there way before the one at KFC, right?
Yeah, because just like Ms. Reed said, like, because they sell fireworks on, on that land every year too also. I mean, it wasn't until that got brought up, it struck a chord.
Okay.
It seems to me that, how many of the council members knew that the, because I heard gasps from the public. How many of you guys think that the public even knows that this land is already purchased by other people? It's, we've had a long time to try to open up channels. And it seems like we are the ones, we want to benefit from the tax dollars. I think that's a given. Everybody agrees to that. But if we really want to have a say, we're going to probably be more productive trying to approach them as a genuine sovereign nation, ask with dignity to sit down and, and like any developer. They've been here a long time. Like Mr. Neal said, we're all one. They don't see themselves as separate from Lamar. This is their land to them as well. But we're not even really willing to have these channels of communication in a, in a way that would be expected if we would do this with any other developer. If a developer came in here with promising large sacks of money with tax dollars, we'd sit down at the table and, and hash it out. And they'd, they'd all have a nice meeting and, and feel very, you know, dignified. We don't offer the same for the sovereign nation. And it's no wonder that they go through channels that are basically just paperwork, because we're treating them like they're not even people.
That, Holly, that is not true. That is not true at all.
So let me, let me just answer counsel's question, please. The, both deeds, both of the title reports that were attached to the application that was received by the city, or the letter that was received by the city, indicates that the, the deeds of trust were taken out and recorded in 2000, both of them.
Okay. What I'm going to say is, we could talk about the problem, but let's talk about fixing the problem. And how will we fix the problem? Could we go along with, I'm turning back to Nathan. What can you do to reach out to him and say, how, how can we have a meeting?
And I just want to get, my counsel, we need to talk about the item that's here. And, and we can talk about this a little bit, and, and we, you have. But the item is really, do you want to approve an objection letter for the, in response to the letter that was received by the Department of Interior, or you don't?
He, he, the city manager just told me that he's going to, that he's going to take some things off. And I, I went along with that.
Look, but that's, that's, we need to get back to that. Because I don't know that, you, you went along with it, but I don't know if the other councils are coming.
Can you repeat what that is that you're going to remove, please?
Okay.
So I had recommended, because he didn't, Mayor Neal didn't particularly care for the, the comments about safety issues for the city. So it'd be the second, second sentence in paragraph, or in item three on the letter?
Do you have a letter in front of you?
Yes, I have it in front of me.
But it says, "The city would be unable to enforce local laws, regulations, or requirements on sections of land located within one of the city's busiest areas." We can leave that. The one I'm saying, either rephrase or just take out would be, "These segmented lands could potentially create unique safety issues for the city due to the fact that the adjacent land could also be affected."
True statement.
Now, and, and my point was earlier, we're not talking about crime safety. We could be talking about any kind of safety. You know, it could be a, an open hole to store something in.
Public nuisance. Yeah, it could be a weed abatement.
Fire.
Weed abatement.
Can you spell that? Can you make it plain for everybody to comprehend that, you know, understand it? Because if you just read it, you understand?
I'm open to suggestions.
Well, the 7th is on Sunday. So if we have to have this out before the 7th, it seems like a simple phone call, just, hey, how, how do you guys feel about it? It's pretty straightforward to me. Unfortunately, we don't have too much time. But is there a way, is there a solution? I think that's what we're looking for now.
Sir, I'd like to say something, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I think this one, you know, this is something that came down through the tribe to the Department of Interior, and then funneled its way back to the city of Lamar and a lot of municipalities throughout our area. You know, this, this, the time is creeping up on us. I don't think that there's, you know, it's, you know, I'm thinking, my feeling is, is we're treating, we're treating everybody the same per se, any, any landowner in the city of Lamar. We're treating everybody the same, with the same equal level playing field.
Respect.
With respect. And, and I'm going to tell you, if anybody says they don't respect them, then they're, they need to get their head examined. I have the utmost respect for them. But I also know too, is, is as we go along and we increase our dialogue, increase our communications with us, we're just, with communications, we're going to get better with better. But, you know, if that's what it takes to remove that, that in there, I'm okay with it. And I think what we should do is, is either make a motion to go forth, or, or cank this.
So may I, may I suggest that we send the letter in objection, and then I will reach out to Leland McGee, who I'm already working with on some other things. And there's no reason why, we, we can sit down with them like we would any other developer. I don't have the authority to waive any fees, but council does. So if they wanted to negotiate a sales tax initiative or something of that nature, that's perfectly within your scope of duties to do that. But I would say we would at a minimum want to maintain the zoning and building standards, and that it fits within the community. Now, if you want to cut them a deal and impact fees and things of that nature, that is absolutely within your scope. But that's not what this letter is about.
No.
This letter is, is about, do we want to have that, have sovereign land within the city of Lamar or not? I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward. We can have these other conversations. I'm willing, and I'll do that. But this, you know, I need, I need direction on the letter.
Okay, Holly?
Thank you. If we are really looking for a consensus of council, and you said you wanted a new direction, I just gave a suggestion of a way that we could approach the council in, in a way that maybe they, like you just said, the council has the possibility of doing all sorts of stuff with tax. And we can negotiate all sorts of stuff. So I'm saying, okay, let's try that. Let's invite, have an invitation. And as I said, a very respectful one, might be an offering of some burnt sage to cleanse the area and, and try and have that discussion. And that might be a different way to approach it, but we probably could avoid future conflict if we at least try and see if we can get that settled. And I'm free tomorrow, actually. So we could do this right away. It'd be before the 7.
So I, I don't know how, how easy it is to get in front of the council, but I know it takes many. We haven't had that kind of success. And if we're going to sit down with them as a council, we need to do special meetings and public notices. And the letter has to go out this week.
Well, we had 19 years to do that. So I don't see why we can't just try tomorrow then.
Can we go ahead and vote on this?
You need a motion.
Okay. Excuse me?
Just, just, is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 3-2 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billings?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
I'm going to abstain because I don't think it even deserves the dignity of a yes or no vote.
Okay. And I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay. We're going to go to.
Hold on, Mayor.
Counsel, abstentions really are only valid under the Brown Act for conflicts. And if you want to identify conflict.
How far away does a conflict need to be from the property?
I'm, I'm not sure what you mean.
If I was to be voting on a property that was near my house, how far away?
500 feet.
Huh?
500 feet.
Okay. So it's not, it's close. Okay, then. I want to make sure that I get this so that it's in the record properly for the minutes. Hell, no. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Holly? Ms. Blair? Sorry for calling you. Outbursts like that, let's add some class, please.
I don't, I could have chosen a different four-letter word, and I didn't. So I think that's about as classy as I'm going to get today.
Okay. Three, we're going to 3.3. Approve a letter of support, safety and health valley fever, AB 203.
Okay. So this is a letter of support at the request of Assemblyman Salas in his office. And basically what AB 203 do, would require instruction, employ, or would require construction employers in counties where valley fever is an endemic, including but not limited to Fresno, Kern, Kings, Madera, Merced, Monterey, San Luis Obispo, and Tulare, to provide effective awareness training on valley fever to all potentially exposed employees by May 1 of 2020.
Okay. You know, I looked this up on, on the website. The CDC website has a list they provide to employers to reduce the risk of valley fever. It has a whole list of that. So yes, I, I agree with Mr. Salas on this, all, all over. But it, they, I'm just letting you know as well, this letter, you can look at it on website. And he just wants it to be approved, that we're just going to amend it, give him our condolences. Okay.
Second.
All right. Anybody on the council or want to, how about anybody in the public? Okay. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve 3-3 as presented. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billings?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
I vote aye. Okay. Motion passes. Okay. 3-4. Approve a letter of support of roundabout, AB 634.
So all this is simply, they would like a letter of support adding roundabouts as the state approved list for, for facilities on public roadways that can become memorials to people or different things. So like bridges can be named. So they just want to recognize roundabouts. And there's about 683 roundabouts in the United States. And California has the second highest number of roundabouts of any state. And they are increasingly becoming more popular because the, the facts out there show that they have less, less incidents at them. So this is just a letter stating that if somebody has a roundabout and when they want to dedicate it, it can be regarded by the California as, as dedicatable.
Okay. I'm even seeing them in I'm on. I mean, they're everywhere, except Lamar.
Not yet.
Hopefully, huh?
Give Mr. Rivera some time.
How much time?
I don't know.
I, I figured that, but. Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion too.
Do, do anybody want to speak on this, on the con? Okay. Got me.
Comrie 1060, pardon me, Lamar. Tonight's a good example of a seemingly endless stream of letters of support. I support the letter in not making lands within the city limits of Lamar tribal lands. But again, this is, these other things, why does the council, the councilman or assemblyman need a letter to vote if they want to name a roundabout after someone? They don't. This is just a, ah, I got to have these, my people here and say they want me to do it. No, if you want to do it, do it. But again, we don't need an endless stream of letters of support. No, if you want to do it, do it, but again, we don't need an endless stream of letters of support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay. Is there a motion?
Y'all make a motion to approve three dash four.
I got a motion, I got a motion by Mr. Billingsley.
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Brown. Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to three dash five, approve of resolutions twenty nineteen slash thirteen, recognizing the, recognizing the importance of the twenty twenty U.S. Census.
Yeah, and this is, this is another request that has gone out to all the cities to pass a resolution to show support for the twenty twenty U.S. Census. I can tell you, Kings County has a whole team dedicated to getting the word out. The city is, is partaking in that event, and they're trying to reach to every nook and cranny to make sure everybody gets counted. So again, this is just at the, at the request that we would recognize the importance of the census twenty twenty. And I might add, some of these, or most of these requests are coming from Assemblyman Salas's office. Mr. Salas has been good to the Valley when it comes to public safety and getting funding for our communities. He helped get grant money for the police department already, to the tune of close to a million bucks, I believe, and he's currently working on, on additional funding for public safety for the city of Lemoore. So, I know it's a, can seem a little bit menial here, but I don't think it's, it's, it's worth the time, because he takes the time to invest in our communities, to put it out there.
And also, the League of Cities has requests a local government show support of this twenty twenty item as well. And I'm on that board, and they're very supportive, so anybody from the public want to expound on this? I see there's none. How about the council? See, there's none. Could I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve three five. Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Lyons. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Three dash six, approval bid awards, CIP fifty-seven, finance department remodeling and addition.
Good evening, council members. Are there any specific questions that I can answer that you may have regarding the project?
Yes. All the capital improvements projects, have they been done?
No, they have not.
Okay, because, yeah, because I, I'm noticing they had, you guys finished them over on nineteenth.
Yes, there, there are some that were going through the checklist, there's, there's some that are, that are still within the, this fiscal year. They're kind of like pre-planned, so we'll have some for the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year, nineteen, twenty fiscal year, so, yeah, all of them are not complete.
Okay, what, why, why is the timeframe, why, how long has this been? I, I remember this with the CIP, because I remember...
This is regarding the finance department remodel, is what we're talking about here.
Okay.
This is a CIP project.
Okay.
It is a project that is being paid out of city, city impact fees, which are general facility impact fees that are collected.
From what I understand, it's just an effort to get the finance department from where they're currently located over to everybody else.
Correct, yes. It's about a thirty-six hundred square foot addition within the warehouse. It'll bring over everybody at, at the current city hall location under one roof.
And sir, this would also make it more ADA, ABA compliant, because you wouldn't have the stairs and things of that nature, everything's on one level.
Exactly.
So it's more wheelchair accessible, things of that nature.
Exactly, yes. Yes, parking will be located where the current employee parking is, is located. So yeah, it'll be, it'll be a structure on, built on grade. There'll be a, a drop box, you know, on the outside, exterior of the building for after hour deposits, but yes, it will be fully ADA compliant.
Thank you.
And that's gonna be on the south side of the building, is that correct?
Yes, just south, yes, as you, as you exit the south exit from that hall corridor, yes, it's, it's within that area, yes.
Okay, you, you asked us if we had any questions. Is there anything that, that arose in the last couple of weeks, or is it, is it looking like it's gonna move smoothly?
Yes, so if, if this is approved, then we have a, a pre-construction meeting with our contractor tomorrow afternoon. He will sign the contract, and then we'll figure out a schedule of when he can start the work.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a question real quick. With this CIP, they all have different CIPs, like this is fifty-seven hundred CIP, this one right here.
Yes.
Okay, this is totally different one for the one I was talking about.
Yes, it is. They all have their own numbers.
Okay. How, how do we look that up to see which ones were on nineteenth? And which ones were on, supposedly on Iona and Vine? How do you know, how do you know?
They're categorized in the budget under the CPI, CIP categories and numbers.
Yeah, and I believe all the CIPs are categorized in one of the schedules in the front-year budget book.
Can you get the new council updated on that?
Yeah, I do believe this, this CIP had like nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars allocated for it.
Okay.
And the, the bid came in at five something, so the reason it took so long, Mayor Neal, is the first bids, when we went out, came in like seven hundred and something thousand, and from our internal estimates, we felt that was high, but at the time we're out to bid, construction was in high demand, so I think people didn't really need work, so prices were elevated, so we went back to the drawing board and kind of waited, and tweaked a few things to, to bring that cost down, and, and we were able to shave a couple hundred thousand off the, the overall project.
Okay.
Yes.
But I do believe it was funded for nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars is what's in the budget, yes. The project, the base bid is five hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars, and then we have a, we have a, an alternate bid. Well, there's actually some contingency that we added to, the five hundred and forty-three for anything that might come unforeseen, so.
Okay, besides cost, are there any other cons that, that we need to know about?
No, I, I, I think it'll be a, you know, we, we specifically went into the warehouse, because basically it's an open warehouse with, with everything that's, everything visible, there's nothing hidden in the wall, so we, we felt that it would be an, an easy project to, to produce, because when you're dealing with remodeling, you never know what you encounter inside of a wall, you know, whether things are undersized, so by going to the warehouse, everything will be brand new. You know, the fires, the fire lines are visible above, so we'll be, we'll be doing tapping into, we'll tap into the fire system. You know, there's already sewer that's stubbed, you know, to that area, so we feel it should go pretty smoothly.
Okay.
Great. How long do you think it'll take?
The contractor has, has a hundred and twenty working days to, to accomplish the project.
Well, I think I read that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will add that the, the ladies over in finance ask us every time we walk in there when they're moving. So, ergonomically wise, their, their existing workspaces need a little bit of help.
Good.
I'm gonna open this to the public. Public want to speak on this? I see there's none, go back to the council. Council wanted to elaborate on this. Can I get a motion?
I motion to approve three dash six.
No, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Lyons, second by Mr. Billingsley. Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
No.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, public hearing, section four. Report discussed in R. The council actions will be taken. Okay, four dash one, closeout of community development block grant, CDBG fourteen dash CDBG nine eight four slash Lemoore Senior Center Improvement Project. Rivera?
Good evening, council, once again. The purpose of this public hearing is to review the accomplishments that were produced from grant number fourteen, CDBG nine eight eight four, and provide a forum where citizens have the opportunity to comment on the community development block grant activities administered by the city of Lemoore. The city council will take no formal action during this public hearing, but may provide informal feedback to staff on the performance of the grant. In October two thousand and fourteen, the city was awarded one million, four hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars in CDBG grant funds to make improvements to the Lemoore Senior Center. The result was a complete tenant improvement of the Stevens Building, also known as the Bingo, Bingo Hall. I want to mention a few of the major improvements accomplished. The, the existing fire sprinkler system, which was deficient, was removed, and a new fire sprinkler system along with alarm system was replaced. Energy-efficient lighting, cooking appliances, kitchen equipment, water heater, and windows were all energy-efficient items that were amenities to the project. ADA-compliant men's and women's restrooms with new plumbing fixtures and interior finishes. Five new energy-efficient HVAC units with all-new AC ducts. Exterior and interior painting, new final flooring throughout the entire building, spray roof coating on the roof, ADA-compliant parking lot and sidewalk improvements around both the nutrition building and the Stevens Building. So, I guess I just want to open it up to the public, see, or to council, see if...
Was there anything that wasn't completed? That you would have liked to?
Yeah, so basically the shell was left in place, and there were some, there were some new siding installed in the front, we added a couple of automatic, you know, ADA, automatic, ADA doors in front. I think we pretty much hit everything, I mean, you know, some of the existing drywall where...
So, but it is ADA compliant though, yeah?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Because I, I've, I've heard there's a tri, possible tripping hazard out there.
Inside the building?
No, I think it was the parking lot, or going from the parking lot to the building, or I, I was, I just vaguely remember that, that's all.
I believe where, what I've heard is, is what, what's happening is where the ADA parking is located, the new ADA parking, there are some wheel stops that prevent the car from encroaching into the five-foot pedestrian pathway in front of the vehicles. I believe that's where they're tripping, is over the curb stops. I may be correct, but that's kind of what I heard.
Okay. So, Mr. Rivera, the senior center is, is located in my district. Have you reached out to any of the, the seniors to see if they're comfortable with, with everything that's taken place and all of the updates? Is there anything lingering?
I've, I've have communication with Richard Ray, there's, there's items that, that during the one-year warranty process, he's called me, I think we have, right now, we have a issue with a portion of the roof that's leaking. But I have made contact after we did the notice of completion. I've, I don't know if I've had, I think a few women here I've talked to before, I think they, you know, they have some, some concerns about a lack of a curb ramp that we removed.
Okay, I think we've discussed that already, and have possibly found a solution, so I wasn't getting at that necessarily, but, but just overall.
I did have that discussion with, yes.
Okay, and good, we got some, we got some here tonight. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, once I open this to the public, I want to, how long have we been working on this senior center?
I believe, I think, what, two thousand and thirteen?
Thirteen?
Yes. Is when it all started.
That's when the process started.
I'm not trying, I'm not trying...
That's when the city went out to get the, the funding, yes.
You know where I'm leading to, because I think, far as these seniors, I, I think they've been more than enough patience. I'm just seeing, what was the holdup? I mean, how many years this is what?
So, I believe the grant was received in twenty thirteen, so all the quotes for service and budget numbers were based on twenty thirteen costs and twenty thirteen building codes. When I came into the city as public works director in twenty sixteen, we were at risk of losing the award due to timing, running out, so we asked for extensions, and then when we went to bid, we, we were way over, and the way these grants work are, you, you can be five percent over, and that's it for a bid. So we did have one bid that came in that would have done both buildings, because the original plan was to do both buildings out at the senior center. But the one bid came in at five point one percent over budget, and also that contractor did not have his, his bid, bid insurance, what do we, bid bond, the bondsman didn't show up with his bids, that would have disqualified him. So, looking at the other prices, we had to go back out, re-scope the job, rebid the job, and then it came back that we could only do one of the buildings for the original price of two, and then we, we proceeded from there. CDBG applications are pretty tough. I will say that Linda Byersdorf over there in the back managed this program for us, and there was a lot of debate over paperwork and things we needed for this bond and for audit purposes. Stuff like time cards with wet signatures that we would require contractors to deliver and bring into the city, that we wouldn't accept a scanned copy and this and that, because as you go through the next several years of audits, they ask for this information. If you don't produce it, you have to pay the grant back, and because the city acted on behalf of the senior center, the city's on the hook for that, I will say they requested wetted signatures for an audit a week or two ago, and I'm happy to report we had everything they asked for. So, Linda was a bulldog on that project, and I truly appreciate it, but yeah, long time coming. Honestly, project, I don't know why it wasn't done, but this thing should have been wrapped up with a bow and done several years ago. I agree with you.
Okay, now, the question is, how will we stop this from happening again?
Because we've got the best staff of any city in Central Valley.
Very good comeback.
That's right.
Okay, now I'm gonna open this to public hearing.
You know what, Mr. Mayor Neal, we've learned from our mistakes.
Okay, that's what I want to hear. That's what I want to hear. Okay. We're gonna open this to public hearing.
Hi, I just wanted to say, as far as the senior center is concerned, the building that none of the seniors used is the one that got beauty. The one that we use is still a piece of crap. The roof leaks, there's too many things to mention, but that's the building that the seniors used. And the air condition went last year for I don't know how many months before we could finally get enough money to fix it. So, there's a lot that needs to be done on the building that should have been done in the first place. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Savage? Your mic's not on.
Ms. Savage, how, what's the solution to that? Would it be putting more time and effort into the building you guys currently use versus the one you don't? Would you need assistance moving to the other building? What, what can we do?
You'd have to talk to Richard about that. I don't think there's any...
I've talked to Richard here recently.
I don't think there's any thing in the future of us moving to the other building, because that's too beautiful.
Okay.
And we'd mess it all up.
Okay, was, was there a conversation in any type of public hearings or at your meetings on, on the steps that were gonna take place?
On the what?
Before, when, when the senior center had their meetings? Was there any information, any information given to them as to what was gonna be happening during construction?
Not until I came to the council meeting, and they said what they were going to repair. And the restrooms in the nutrition building, half of the doors don't lock, the toilets wobble, and like I say, there's a lot in that building that needs attention.
I'm so sorry.
It's either move them all to the other building and forget that one, or try to do something. But I know many times, we have had people sitting there eating lunch when it was raining, and the rain dripped right in their lunch plate. So...
Okay, thank you for the update, Ms. Savage.
I agree.
My name is Richard Ray, I'm the president of the Lemoore Senior Center. When the grant was first talked about, and we were approached with our wish list, what did we want? The intention of the entire grant was to do both buildings, because they are both in dire need of repair. At the time that we were informed that there was not enough funds to do both buildings... At the time that we were informed that there was not enough funds to do both buildings, and the council or Nathan came to us and asked what would be the better thing to do. We are a self-standing organization. We receive no help from federal, state, city, county. Everything that we get, we have to earn ourselves. The reason we did the Bingo building was because Wednesday Night Bingo is one of our main fundraisers for our funds. Also, that's the building that we do most of our rentals. It was, it's a hard choice to make, but we needed the income. The nutrition building needs repair, but it doesn't bring us any revenue. That building still needs repairing, it's falling around, down around our ears, and short of another grant, I don't really know what to do about it. We're trying to get, uh, one of the members is looking into a, uh, GoFundMe account to try to get the roof repaired. That's the main thing we need done, uh, and we also need ceiling, lighting. We need the same thing in that building that we needed in the other building. But at the moment, we are surviving now because we do have the Bingo Hall that we can rent and have revenue. And we also do our fireworks out of that building. We're thankful for what we've got. Uh, the concern with the parking lot is that in the last year, we've had eight seniors that have tripped over the car stops for whatever reason and have suffered injuries. Uh, I don't have a solution for that. Be careful, but we do thank you for what we do have, and hopefully we will be able to get further assistance in getting your other building fixed. Thank you.
Mr. Ray? Thank you for coming tonight. I, I really appreciate it, and, and from what I understood, uh, when I went out there, I can't remember if you were there or not, but I, I met with a couple people. It looks like making the parking lot ADA compliant created hazards that are causing people to trip. I don't know what the solution is to that. I, I know that with some of the curbs, we're looking at, at modifying them a little bit just to make it a little bit easier. But please let me know what else we can do to, to, uh, to assist you guys in, in some of the roof work. I don't know, we're Facebook Live right now. If some of the clubs and organizations can help you guys out as well, I would, I'd challenge everybody for that, cause I know you guys need some help. But please let me know what I can do as well, or the council will take care of it.
I will do that, and the one thing that, uh, when the two buildings were initially going to be redone, the reason is, I understand, for moving the parking lot and handicap where they are, is that that area between the two buildings is going to be the main entrance. So, the entrance we are using for the nutrition center was no longer gonna be there. At that time, they took out the ha- the ramp up to the main entrance. Well, now, since that didn't happen, they still use that entrance and that curbing is a problem. That's what we're trying to get that ramp put back in.
Gotcha, okay. I, I told there's a solution in place for that, so please come back in two months, hold us accountable, make sure it gets done for you. We'll keep pressing forward. Take care of you guys.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
One, one more thing, Mr. Ray, um, I just want, what part am I missing? You guys have one building or two buildings?
We have two buildings.
Well, at the time, why would you use a building that's not appropriate for you guys right now? Why couldn't you use a building that's a...
Because the building, the, the nutrition, what they call it, Nutrition Center is, has the larger kitchen, and that's where the folks wanna eat. That's where we serve lunch, Monday through Thursday.
Okay.
Uh, my suggestion was, at the time, the building, the Bingo Hall was completed, that there is a small kitchen in there and we could use that to serve lunch. We did that probably for two weeks, and everybody did not like it. They wanted to go back to the old building.
Okay.
When you have seniors, you do what they want.
Yes, I understand. Yes, sir, and we're gonna try to assist you guys. We're sorry.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Ray, real quick. Um, just going back to when the, when it was decided to use, uh, or to, to work on the Bingo Hall versus, versus the kitchen area. Um, was that a, a board decision? Did that go out to a vote? Um, because I just was told that they just found out when they came to council it was going to be done.
The, the board, when they first came to us, the first thing I did was go to the board of directors. It was brought up at a regular board meeting. The decision of the board was unanimous to have the Bingo Hall done because of our fundraising that we do in that building. And the majority of the people that were there agreed to that same decision.
I see, and did this, were the seniors then notified then? Because I'm just trying to piece together why seniors are coming here saying that they had not been notified which building would be worked on, which wasn't.
No, no, they were notified from the very beginning. In fact, uh, we had started moving furnishings out of the nutrition building because we were gonna do that one first. Then we had to reverse ourselves and put that furniture back and move out of the Bingo Hall when we found out that we could only do one. But all of the, the seniors that attend, uh, the senior center were well aware of what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Thank you.
March, March thirty-sixth, second, Maldon. Uh, I think overall, there was kind of poor planning. I would have thought that all problems should have been documented, and then the list prioritized. That wasn't done. It was, well, you do this building or you do this building, in the case. So, and that's what happened, so therefore, Jan is right in what she's saying. I tried to get a copy of the things that were going to happen out there. Uh, when I worked, we used to call it a POANM. I was told by Richard, no, you can't have that because it's subject to change. Yeah, they are subject to change. As work progresses, you update, you change, you add, you delete. I couldn't get it. I went to the city. Nathan says he never had that request, but somebody over at the city did tell me, no, you have to go out to the seniors and get it. So, people were not really kept informed. Most of the information coming from the seniors was, that is ADA compliant and the city takes care of all that, end of the subject. So, it was kind of a cut and dried thing, really not a lot of information being passed out. So, and like I said, I would have thought it'd been prioritized, and that roof in the nutrition building was the biggest problem they had out there. The roof is actually caving in. I mean, some of it's fallen on the, the floor. But we didn't fix that. We fixed the building, which I do know is the general public building, because it does. And I would hope somewhere in their profit, taking this last year, shows a big increase in profit in that building for the million dollars they put into it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other public hearing? Closing public hearing, going back to council?
Just to have one question, is the building that was not repaired safe? I don't want, I don't want a roof falling in on somebody. I mean, I mean, uh, that's my number one concern, you know, for anybody.
I haven't been in there, um, since we completed the, the project, so...
Maybe somebody, you know, just, you know, goes down, we got some information, just to make sure that it is safe for the public.
We can have the, the building inspectors, um, walk, uh, do an inspection of the building, see if there's any, any items that need to be addressed.
Now, I'd like to clarify one thing. We did look at both buildings to piecemeal things, but the way these grants work, you have to have the building, certain requirements have to be met. And if we would have tried to fix things in both buildings, we had to completely upgrade the fire system in the one building. We would have had to completely upgrade the fire system in the second building. And the ADA, the ramp we took out was because it wasn't compliant with ADA. So, the monies we would have spent just on fire requirements, new Title twenty-two or twenty-four for lighting, and then making the parking lots compliant, would have spent a million dollars out of the one point four, and only one point one was for construction. You would have essentially not done anything to the other building, so I understand the, you know, the need to try to piecemeal it, but it's, it's not like you're using general dollar. You have to meet so many requirements to meet the conditions of that grant.
And plus it was prevailing woods, right?
Yeah, and we just couldn't do it. We would have literally spent all the money on fire system and parking lot, and we'd have been out of money, and then we'd have, we'd have two senior buildings that have leaky roofs and are inadequate and didn't have new doors or windows, and we'd be worse off than we are now, you know? Um, I, I know it didn't come off as anybody planned, and, and I don't know why construction didn't start in twenty thirteen. I know there was some, a lawsuit with, and all stuff that kind of held it up and, but, you know, we, uh, I'm actually pretty proud of the team for, for what they did put together. I mean, we were literally within days of losing that grant. I mean, literally losing it. We almost had to come to council and say, we lost the whole grant. Sorry, seniors, you've got nothing. That was a very real reality back in sixteen or early seventeen. So, we did the best with what we had, and, and I think they got a pretty good product out there now, and rentals are good, and so, yeah, is there work to do in the other building? Absolutely. But it's trying to find money. I don't know if there's more grants out there or not.
So, I just wanted to explain why sometimes I have this frustration, because it always feels like we're playing catch-up when we could get ahead of a, of a problem in some instances. And so, I wanna break down a little bit of what I just heard and the, and the problem, and a possible solution to this, to actually move us forward. So, right away, the, the senior center board, it kind of operates like a nonprofit group, similar to Lions, Kiwanis, um, those sort of groups. Am I correct? It's a non, is it, is it separate entity? It's not the city, correct?
Correct.
Five oh one three.
Right, so it, it operates in a similar fashion. So, they have a board, and they have members, and the members elect the board. And while, uh, we can sit and listen to the problems that are happening in the senior center, obviously that's important, cause that's, that's our city too. Um, but a lot of the decision-making that was done ahead of time was done as this entity that's sort of like its own, um, and, uh, membership club, if you will, correct? Yes, okay, I just wanna verify that we're all on the same page here.
Okay.
So, I'm hearing kind of a difference between what the membership thinks is happening and what the board is saying is happening. And what that tells me is that there's a really simple solution to fix it, and it's not one that we are really ready to, we necessarily wanna jump into, but I'm going to give this suggestion anyway, because if we don't get ahead of it, we're gonna be back here probably in a couple more years. Because I was out there serving with the Lions right after the election, and right away, um, there, there was a sewer backup when we were trying to serve, uh, meals. And I was under the impression, first on council, that that was actually our, our, our problem, our property, and the city needed to take care of it. So, I actually called, like, the city manager at the time, and, and we had that cleaned up. Um, and then later on, I found out more about the board and how it operated, and more about how the membership operated, and I, I actually listened to a lot of the concerns. And instead of just, you know, having these token pictures taken, I wanted to actually try and understand what's happening out there. And I think a lot of these concerns are really important and legitimate. The board and the membership, essentially, if you want better outcomes, need to change, just like as if it was an election with the council, for example. You wanted a better, like, uh, you know, changes, you get, you elect new board members. Instead of just having them do it themselves, where it seems like we're gonna continue to have these problems of communication, I'm suggesting, why not have the city partner with some of the local youth? Um, we've already talked about having them involved with Parks and Rec. We always want our youth to get more involved with our service organizations. Maybe it's a good time to talk to, I, I was out there with the Lamore Lions. I don't know what other groups have been out there. Hey, they know how to operate these programs. They, the, the Lions, for example, got a grant, and then out with the PAL program, they put out that, uh, wrestling mat. And so, they know how to get the grant, and they had it repaid, and they had the mat laid down, and they take care of it. What if they, like, actually oversaw or helped with this other board that's struggling with communication and operation? Had them kind of, like, be a brother-sister kind of relationship, let, have them be a, a nonprofit group that helps them. But instead of just relying on that, actually have the city involved with recruiting youth to get involved with both organizations, so that they're involved and understand how boards operate. But also, in, there's an incentive to get involved in some of the service organizations for them, because now the youth could have a say in what's happening in those boards, even if they're not senior citizens. It would be a way to engage everybody and have better outcomes.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Anybody else on the council wanna say anything? Okay, can I get a motion?
There's a motion. This is just information only.
So, you don't wanna actually have a discussion about a possible solution?
This is information only. We're just, as part of the grant, we're required to report it out in public forum, so there's no action required.
So, we'll move on? A motion on this thing?
Counsel, it's information only pursuant to the terms of the grant.
Okay. We're gonna go to, for that, it's two, abatement of public nuisance property located at three eleven C Street, APN oh two oh zero nine four zero zero six. Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, counsel again. On February, February nineteenth, two thou- two thousand nineteen, the city council adopted Resolution twenty nineteen oh dash oh nine, formally identifying locations within the city that were in violation of City Ordinance, uh, Number four dash two dash two. Nuisance declared by resolution. For City Ordinance four dash two dash eight, a public hearing is required in order to hear all objections related to the identified locations being declared as a public nuisance prior to the abatement of the properties. Staff request that council's, council's consideration to continue the abatement process as approved in Resolution two nineteen dash zero nine for three eleven C Street. So, tonight I, I have, um, a few, uh, city personnel. I have, uh, code enforcement officer, we sold Ed Perez. Also have Officer Ryan Obar. They've actually been working, um, to, uh, resolve the issue of this property for approximately about a year. So, um, they're here to, to answer any questions that council may have, that may have for them regarding, um, you know, their response for service. I know that I've, uh, we've sent building inspectors out, uh, several occasions to, uh, to, um, make sure that the premise was secured, so we actually contacted building maintenance, which they went out, I believe, like, four or five times to basically board up doors and windows to keep vagrants from entering the building. So, um, anyway, this, this is a public hearing. I'm gonna open it up, but if you have any questions for, you know, staff...
I'm, I'm gonna open it up to public hearing.
Larry Harper, good evening, mayor, fellow counsel, members and staff. Thank you for your service. I'm a real estate broker, and I have made contact with one of the owners, which is Miss Sharon Johnson, survivor of, um, Charles Johnson. And through that contact, we were able to obtain a listing agreement for her interest, so the property is going to be going on the market. Did a personal inspection on March twenty-second. Matter of fact, called the police department to make sure there wasn't a call, thinking that a vagrant was breaking in. Officer Obar, uh, was on duty and, and he arrived at the scene as well. So, with that, there's also an, um, Jeffrey Levinson, attorney, is in contact with the other half interest, which is the survivors of, um, William Graham. There is an interested buyer, which happens to also be Jeffrey Levinson. So, the purpose of me standing up here is to ask to stay the abatement process at this moment, because it appears, in my opinion, that the property has been secured enough to avoid further vagrant activity on the inside. I am aware there is an array of debris spread throughout some of its personal, um, identity documents that probably need to be handled very cautiously. And then, um, you know, then there's books and that matter. So, with the contact with Johnson and her being on board to sell it, and us being very close with a buyer, we're, I think that within a month, we can have this in escrow and closed by the end of April. And with the buyer, of course, whatever the council deems necessary, code enforcement, um, building department wants that buyer to come and, and put their plan of action in a stipulation agreement or something of that manner. I, I think that it'll be a win-win for everybody.
Anybody in the public? I see there's none, close to the public, back to council.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Harper. Um, and sort of, so if we, if we stop the abatement program on this right now and let's say that their escrow doesn't go through and then we have to start it back up again, we're going to lose another ninety days on this or whatever.
You can continue this to the next hearing, uh, next council meeting or to a council meeting in the future?
Yeah, so what I'm asking is, is, because he's asking us to stop the payment program, which I'm all for if, if, you know, you're going to go through with your, your buy and sell. But could we stop it at the next council meeting, just as easy as we could at this one?
You, you could, you could not move forward. I don't know what, um...
I'm, I'm re...
Go, go ahead.
I'm requesting a stay. That way there's no more tax dollars, no more staff time used until the next council meeting. I'm asking for a month. At that time, it will probably have changed ownership and the abatement process won't be necessary on the city's behalf because the new buyer will have already began the process.
Okay, I, but you understand where I was coming from, right? I, I didn't want to stop something in, in, in the, uh, I know how real estate happens. You know, sometimes it does and it doesn't. I just, I didn't want to lose the time that we already have invested, that's all.
May I ask, where are you at in the abatement process other than...
Oh, you'd have to ask Mr. Rivera that.
Other than boarding up the windows and the countless hours of, of safety, code enforcement, we understand that. But from, from today forward, what else would be needed?
Counsel, may, may I let you know that you could, because the public hearing has already occurred, you could table this item to a date specific. It could be the next council meeting, it could be the one in May or the second one in May. And wait to make your decision on the resolution until that time. You would not lose anything, you would not hold another public hearing. You would just decide what you would be deciding tonight at a later date.
And that would also work in his interest as well?
It would, it's what he's asking for.
All right, perfect, all right, all right. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Blair?
I actually was going to ask that question, if we could just make a motion to table it. But again, um, I didn't know that council had to take a backseat to waiting for everybody else to talk.
Okay.
Mr. Harper, uh, sorry to make you sit down and stand up again. All right, so how confident are you that the buyer will mitigate any of the public safety nuisances soon? Like within a month?
The interested buyer is Jeffrey Levinson as well.
Okay.
So I'm very confident based on his profession, his involvement, helping the, um, the Grahams on their probate side. So he wants to get started right away. We're just a few dollars off from an agreement and I believe that Ms. Johnson is going to have to move forward, although it's against my advice, market-wise, but, you know, she needs to do what you got to do at this point in time.
Sure, no, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just spoke with Officer Obar. He went out there recently and he said, under the current condition, a month is probably going to be okay. To wait, because ideally what we want is a responsible owner to take care of the property. We don't necessarily want to abate it as a city and assume those costs. And ultimately, if we can get a new owner in there to make it, you know, productive property, that's what we want in the end.
Mm-hmm. Totally agree.
I don't have any other questions.
Back to you. Anybody want to speak on this anymore? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to table this item to the next meeting.
Second.
May I ask for clarification? You want to the next meeting or do you want it to the meeting, the sec, first meeting in May? I mean, first meeting in May or second meeting in May? Thirty days would be the first meeting in May approximately.
Which everyone, you think is best?
First meeting in May?
It's your motion.
Whatever the consensus of the council is, May? Do you guys say May first? Okay, May.
Second. Second, May seventh would be the date.
That would be May seventh, okay. Got a motion by Holly, a second by Mr. Brown? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Lyons?
Aye.
Mr. Billingsley?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay. New business section five. Report and discussion of other council actions will be taken. No new business, okay, city council reports and requests.
Well, I just wanted to report out that I had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Neal a little bit, um, before council meeting on some of the items and found some common ground and I was very pleased. And I just wanted to take time to say thank you for a very cordial conversation. It was very informative. Um, I, for the first time, I got to find out about his brother. I, I didn't know, did you guys know he played in the NFL? That, I, I didn't even know. I didn't know he was a football player, so I thought that was really cool that you filled me in because everybody kept telling me about this. So I didn't know that, so I just, that's really cool. He had a brother that played football, so, um, but I'm really appreciative of our conversation. And, um, I also wanted to take a moment to say, um, as exciting as it was to learn about your brother and him playing in the NFL and all that, because I didn't, didn't know that before our conversation, uh, I wanted to let our public know, um, that Mr. Neal, uh, here is actually our, uh, Lamore's first black mayor. Is that correct? You're our first African, first African-American mayor. And I think that it's a source of pride and it wasn't printed in the newspaper. And I think it is deserving of at least a mention because I think we have this knee-jerk reaction of saying, oh my gosh, what did she just say? We should be proud of this. We're moving forward, our community is coming together. And it was, it wasn't in the paper. And I wanted to take a moment during my council comments to, to note that because it turns out we have two famous Mr. Neils in, from Lamore. So I hope that Wikipedia page gets updated, people. Do your job out there. So anyway, have a great week. Thank you.
I thank you, Ms. Blair. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I, uh, only thing I have to, uh, report out is, uh, went to the K CAG meeting, uh, last month and, uh, and LAFCO. I have nothing to report out on those. I went to the CART meeting, uh, only thing I need to report out is if everybody goes to cartbus.org, they're showing proposed twenty nineteen service changes in Kings County. So if you go to, once again, cartbus.org, they'll show you the proposed changes. They'll show you the dates of the public hearings. And they'll show you where you can put written comments in for the proposed service changes. You know, whether you have suggestions, uh, for unmet, unmet needs or you just want to voice your opinion, you can put it there. So they're very responsive, Angie Dow and the team over there. So, um, once again, uh, cartbus.org. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, so I went to the Kings County Commission on Aging and, uh, they're still having a little bit of problem with their thing called match money. And, uh, I was actually able at, when we went to the tribal meeting out there with all the other cities in, in the county, I actually got to meet, oh, and I forgot her name. I wrote it down, but I can't remember it. She's like the, uh, city manager, if you will. Rebecca Campbell, that's right. She, and she came to this, uh, aging council with me and I think, I think some really positive ground was gained on getting the... Oh, so did Mr. Brown. I, I almost forgot to mention that.
No, no, no. But...
Um, we really made some, uh, forward progress with that, I think. Would you agree?
I agree and opened up communications. Thank you for, for starting, I mean, uh, you know, kudos. Uh, new set of eyes on it, open up communications is the biggest thing is. We do that, we solve a lot of problems.
Right on, so, so I had that and also not to mention the, the meeting that we had out of the palace. That was informative and, uh, I, I'm, I was, it was fun regardless of the presentation. The presentation was even interesting. And I got to reconnect with, uh, Manuel Pete Allen East. He's, uh, on the tribal council. He's a really cool guy and it's funny, we had, uh, he came up to me, he's like, man, I thought I recognized you. And I was like, yeah, we used to play Little League together. And then I got to meet the chief and his son was Robert Barrios, which blew my mind too. I played baseball with Robert Barrios, so, yeah, a lot of fun things. I was pleased, really pleased.
Very good. Mr. Billingsley?
Yes, sir. Uh, the meeting out at the, the palace was very informative and it was great to, to get to meet up with, with all the councils from, from across the valley, including, including the palace. Also, uh, I attended a mosquito abatement meeting and there's not much movement there minus, um, they continue building a new building. So when you guys go outside this summer and you're not getting bit by mosquitoes, there's a process for that. And I want to thank those guys for doing what they do. I attended a Kings E D C meeting last week and the focus was on, uh, industrial hemp. And so that's interesting. I know just east of us that that's going to be coming. Hemp isn't necessarily cannabis, but there are a lot of other good properties for it. So they had a very informative, uh, meeting on that topic. And I'm going to expect to see some of that coming, uh, to the west of us as well. And that's all I have.
Okay. Trying to make this quick as possible. First of all, I want to thank you again, Holly, uh, for making that notice. But you know what I really like about talking, having a conversation with you? When I talk about God, you be quiet. You know, no, it, it, it's the truth.
He's, he, he, it does, it's the only time we'll be quiet.
And, and I know, I, if she's Superman, I know her kryptonite and, because God never fails. Other than that, Mr. Brown, I appreciate all the work you've been doing, uh, far as getting on boards that I can't show up to. And Mr. Lyons likewise, you too. I appreciate, I appreciate all of the work you guys are doing. And you know, sometime it, it looks rocky, but we got to look at the positives and keep going with the positive more and pounding on the negatives. Everybody thinks differently. And, uh, I'm not going to get mad because everybody thinks differently. I'm just going to, if, if they hurt my feelings, I'm going to love them anyway. And, uh, I'm going to go with the report. Uh, I attended the city-county coordinated meeting. I met, uh, Mr. McGee a while back and he said, instead of having this at West Hills College, why don't you have it at, uh, Tatchi Palace? And we got together and we talked about it and they treated us, I mean, they treated us like kings out there. They had the best food. I, I loved the food. I, I forgot what, what it was about. I was eating so much and going back for seconds. But other than that, uh, first time ever hosted the Tatchi tribe. They gave us a list of concerns that may be able to help the county address. I personally am to support of renewing the twenty-year gaming compact. I would like the council to direct staff to draft a letter of support as well. I think what they presented to us about the employment rate and how many people are working from Fresno, Madera, Ba, even coming from Bakersfield, Kern County to Tulare County to Kings County. We have a lot of people out there working and they are assisting the kids as well as we are. I mean, they got a movie theater out there, they got a bowling, they, they're, they're just growing. And we have, we got to have open arms and I think, I think we're moving in the right direction. Um, I don't know when we're going to be able to go on one of the count, uh, one of the, um, boards. They have, they have their own council. And I know, I don't know, one of these days I'm going to have to address that with them. And I don't know how to do that with you.
Yeah, I can check with Leland.
Okay, check with that. And lastly, I received a Facebook post regarding how our town looks. Some people think that our town looks bad. This is why I want to reestablish the tree committee. Uh, they want to beautify, they want to beautify our city with trees, wherever we pulled trees up at, if we could put trees back in there. You know, if you go to, uh, Kingsburg, I drove through there. It's beautiful. When you go through there, it's a beautiful place. And, uh, I think our, I think our town's beautiful too. I think we have some work we need to be, that needs to be done. But I, I drove through and I, I remember seeing a tree sitting on the side of the golf course for about four or five months at one time. It was, it was a broken limb. And it said, and everybody was complaining about it. And I asked, but we were short on staff at that time. But if you look at the golf course now, it's, it's looking good. And to me it is. And I just want to let you guys know, do you guys, the staff keep up a good work? The police department keep up the good work? The fire department keep up the good work? And let's just stay positive. God bless.
God bless.
Mr. Open, would you like to say anything?
Uh, just that, I know some of these letters of support take, take time. That was that direction of, of council, that any letter of support, they wanted to be brought to council. So I, I would be open, I would be open to if there's letters of support that come, if, if it doesn't impact the city financially in any way, that maybe you give, consider giving staff the authority to, to sign off on those and then I could just make it part of my weekly update for letter supports or... So we, I realize it takes some time to go through that, but just, just an option. Don't need an answer tonight, maybe something to think about how we want to handle those in the future.
Okay. All right. I see the time now is nine fifteen. Very good. I wonder, could I get a consent from the council about the gaming, uh, letter?
Absolutely, for me.
Yes. Yeah, I agree.
Would you give the direction to staff?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. All right, it's nine fifteen. City council adjourned.